Not to the fact that they're just outboard of the shoreline.
Well.
And that's a clear distinction, right?
There was.
And that's usually what we see outboard of the shoreline. These timber crib structures, these riprap structures are usually distinct elements. It's not like the whole, they filled outboard all with boulders.
Right.
It's usually related to these old crib walls.
Right.
Where they needed the riprap to protect these old structures.
But that was something that they encountered and they had to deal with in their construction.
Right, but we think if, you know, again, it's not unique to this 100-foot by 100-foot lot.
Now, one thing.
But it certainly, what our information, our prior experience shows is that it's at least unique to this area of the block.
One thing I was curious about was, there was a structure previously on the 21st Street site. I wasn't sure when it was constructed, what year, and what kind of foundation it had. If it had the similar foundation with these timber piles and these, you know, border pile caps, if that was something they encountered, I wasn't sure about that.
Sure.
It seems to me that we should expand on this report and go north and south and get as much information as we can, if we can. In addition to the boulder condition, there's also the building leaning condition. And we, I don't know, again, we don't know what the situation was with West 21st Street. I understand the logic of saying, well, if that building on the corner is leaning, wouldn't have leaned into it. We don't have that information.
Another question along those lines is, I'm just curious, you have any survey dated to back up your assumption that the three buildings are leaning and moving together? I mean, I understand the theory about there's no gap, but something a little more concrete like, yes, we have a survey of, you know, this floor level and it's definitely leaning this way. You know, or window sills, you know, that we can see from those windows.
Okay, let's leave it and come back because I think we've answered as much as we can today and then we can expand on the report. But, and again, I'm just, I guess I'm repeating myself, but even if the other building leaned or it's not, we don't see that as conclusive in terms of the conditions being unique.
Well, it's very important because that's your main reason for saying that you cannot demolish this building without extensive costs.
Right.
So that's why it's important.
Okay, so we'll take a look at this and this condition. But again, you know, the reasonable return is two elements. There's costs and there's income. So there's two pieces of it that we'll talk about together in the context of the reasonable return.
Right, but I just have to make the point that if it is found that this is not a unique situation, then these costs can't be considered premium costs. They would just be considered ordinary construction costs and you would have to show us that an ordinary unencumbered site with these ordinary costs could make a return.
Fine, we'll do that. We'll do that. Okay.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to conclude. I think that data is there. We can elaborate on it, you know, make it more clear if that's what's necessary, but we do think we have the data to support the opinions, the professional opinions that we've come to date.
With respect to the subject of leaning, I mean, we demolish buildings all the time and there are party wall buildings, there are buildings right up against each other, right? Is it unusual to find buildings that are leaning against each other?
Yes, I mean, that's something that is a concern in every.
Rows of tenement buildings all built in a row like that, not necessarily with shared party walls?
It is, and I mean, unless the foundations are compromised, right? Why would you expect the building to be leaning? And we do know that our foundations have settled and are degraded, so therefore they're leaning, right? There's a cause and an effect here.
Well.
And most of these other jobs, we go into those buildings and those foundations of those old buildings are in great shape.
So even where they're built on fill as opposed to bedrock?
Sure.
Lower east side and that kind of stuff?
Sure.
That hasn't necessarily been my experience.
Neither has it been mine. I have years of having to go to collapses in Brooklyn.
Brooklyn, yes.
Well, there are collapses that are caused during demolition if there are conditions that are not revealed.
During demolition, but also because you get significant leaning, especially in row houses that have rubble foundations, where you start to have what you're talking about, sort of that movement, and it all moves at once. And once you decide that you're going to take out one of those pins.
Right, but the question started with the supposition that just because we have old buildings, we have leaning, and that's not the case. There are old buildings where the foundations have been compromised or degraded.
Absolutely.
And in those conditions, as existed this site.
I think we were challenging your premise that it was unusual. I'm not so sure that it's necessarily unusual. One can find it, you know, in various places in the city. I'm just saying that it's not unusual and it's not my, in my experience, it's not unusual.
But we have both, we have a condition where we have this leaning, but the building is in great shape, right? It can be preserved, right? But.
But that's a different question.
Yeah.
Because you're relying very much for this argument on the fact that the buildings are leaning, therefore can't take the building down, right? That's where all this is heading towards. And if you could take the building down, then arguably the construction cost would be less because you're not worried about the effect on the neighboring buildings. But I mean, just literally across the street on Broadway, there was a removal of a building which caused the destabilization of the neighbor. So we see it, in fact, it happens quite a lot in this neighborhood.
All of Tribeca.
Yeah, all of Tribeca is afflicted by this kind of destabilization.
Right, well, here we have a sample, we have a sampling of projects in the area. For the most part, right, we have one, two, three, four projects right around the site and we probably have more where we didn't encounter these conditions and were able to demolish the existing buildings and not have this hardship that we're suffering at this site.
Okay, so maybe it's a, maybe it's a construction difficulty, but it's not a unique condition. Maybe that's what we're talking about. So what we're trying to do is figure out how to get to the A finding. We're still having difficulty, right? In part because we have the adjacent property and a lot of soil study information and in part because now we're talking about leaning building in New York City where buildings lean.
So we're gonna, I'm gonna sum up where we are and what we need to do on the A finding and then we're gonna move on to the B finding because there were a number of questions with that as well. So with the A finding, again, our position is that we have an aggregate of conditions, an aggregate of conditions that altogether create a building that doesn't have a feasible return. Those conditions include the costs involved with construction, the premium costs, and we'll talk about encumbered and unencumbered, but it also means that what can we build on the site once we address those? So in that situation, we have the split lot and we have the size of our lot and the extent of our lot in each district. And when you put all of those together and we did our financial work, we did not get a reasonable return. And it's based on those factors that are part of the lot and it's an aggregate of factors. It's not any one particular factor and we're not saying that any one particular factor is not found at other sites in the city.
Okay, so, but we always look at the premium cost. That's one of the main.
Yes.
And before we get into the financials, the premium cost we look at, and we had a project not too long ago where the premium cost was something like $20 million, right? So then you're very sympathetic because it's costing them $20 million to deal with the structural problems on their site. And in this case, we started off with a premium of a million and a half dollars, which doesn't get you to the same sympathy.
No, but that number was, that number was wrong, but even the new number, I agree, is not 20 million.
Right, and it's, well, for one, not sure that we get to your new number because in fact it's a new number. But let's just say even if it were the new number, it's not very much and it doesn't get you as much sympathy, right?
Right.
So.
I guess that's what I'm.
To compensate for the two and a half million or whatever isn't a big variance if we agreed there was an A finding, right?
So I guess, yeah, and again, I guess I just want to make sure I'm saying it clearly enough. It's really the aggregate and it's the premium cost and it's what you can build to address those premium costs that are limited.
Because you could just take a site that's in a perfectly good location, that's 50 feet wide, and you could say, I paid, I paid a lot of money for this site because that's a going rate and I can't make a reasonable return on a hotel here, but that's not a variance application, right?
No, it's not, it's not.
Because, right, so, you know, I probably shouldn't have bought this site or the site's overvalued even if we, even if we're using comps and it can't, and the market doesn't support the as-of-right uses. That's not a variance, right? So first we have to get the A finding.
Right.
And then the premiums that result from all the burdens, that's what gets compensated, not just, not market conditions. Obviously residential market is better than, say, some kind of commercial market.
Totally, we totally, and we understand. And so we, so we looked at a whole aggregate of conditions, costs, what we can build and not based it on what we paid or what we might have paid or whatever for the site. So let's go to the costs and talk about that because I know there were a lot of questions on this, Commissioner Ollie Brown.
Right, and I just wanted to add to the chair that on the flip side of your conversation, there could be unique conditions that are established that don't necessarily result in a financial hardship. And you could still make more than a reasonable return even having those unique conditions. So it's not just a question of uniqueness and the B finding separate. Uniqueness has to lead to your inability to be equal to your neighbors. It needs something to make you whole and make you whole as even with your neighbors. And so it's a two-step process. You have two thresholds, but you have interrelated thresholds, the A and B.
Right, and we believe that we demonstrated that is because of those conditions that we have, the costs that we have. So that's what we're gonna, that is.
Right, but if you would, you know, I know you were here, you heard my comments and my comments actually stated the opposite, what I felt was the opposite, looking at your information that was given to me. So therefore, and combining that with information that was given to the opposition.
That's fine, and we're gonna try to answer those, I understand. Okay. So I'm gonna call, or ask Jack Freeman is gonna come up next.
This is still the morning session, right? I'm here to try and address, hopefully successfully, some of the questions that came up. The only thing I just want to point out here is that we have never said that the issue of leaning is a premium cost. The issue of leaning and supporting the adjacent structures only comes up when you look at an alternative which would demolish the existing building. We have not said that leaning results in any underlying premium costs. So I just want.
No, but having to keep the existing building leads to premium costs because of the specialized drilling equipment, so it's related.
Right, but when we were asked to look at a building alternative which would demolish the existing building, it was the conclusion of the engineers, which is what drove the cost, that a number of things would have to take place. If you remove the existing building, you'd have to replace the existing structures stabilizing influence with a stabilizing structure. So that was part of the cost. The other thing that you have to do when you replace the existing buildings is you have to reproduce basically the volume and construction that's within the existing building. So there's a savings that results from keeping the existing building. But I don't believe that in any of the documents submitted, it was ever said that the leaning issue or the stabilization of the adjacent buildings was a premium cost. The only premium costs that were identified were related to the underlying foundation conditions of the building and how those were being addressed. So I just wanted to make sure we clarified that we have never said there was a premium cost related to the stabilization of the adjacent properties. So now, in fact, as Carol mentioned, there were mistakes made and they were in two areas. One was, there was a change in the construction cost premium estimate and it rose to about $3.2 million. The result of that was essentially a result of materials increases because the geotechnical engineer and the structural engineer identified additional scope of work items that increased the materials cost and the character of addressing those. So it was essentially an $800,000 increase. A construction cost estimator doesn't do the engineering. In order to do his estimate, what he does is he takes the facts that are provided to him by the technical professionals, the engineers and the architects, and he does an estimate on that basis. So what happened in between was, and that's why we had Muser here, they did additional survey work, the additional scope was identified, and that increased the information provided to the construction cost estimator and resulted in roughly an $800,000 increase in.
Sorry, wasn't it the third test pit, if I understood correctly, that revealed the extra bouldering? It was the third test pit. That was conducted in May of 2015, right? The first hearing here was in September of 2015.
The estimate that was done by the estimator in the first instance was in a report submitted to you in March. And subsequent to that.
No, I.
That was revised by the estimator, so the information.
Right, 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 because I'm just gonna interrupt you. The first hearing was in September. New data was discovered over the summer. We go to hearing, we find out, before we go to hearing, I mean, you applicant, before you go to hearing, you find out new data. You say, wow, opportunity to revise my application to be accurate and you don't, you choose not to do it. I'm confused.
Well, the construction cost, I'm not, I'm.
Because it was many months before that you had the new data, so that's, it's extremely confusing to me why.
All right, I'm sorry that Bill McHogan was unavailable. Basically, he submitted a letter dated September 24th, which reflected his subsequent discussions with the engineers and the additional facts he had available. And on the basis of that, he did revise his estimate.
But he revised it after the first hearing, after we reviewed all this data, which was your represent, the applicant, you and your team's representation of what the situation was. And so what I'm not understanding is, how are we supposed to, how would you respond to?
My response is.
To me saying to you that I submitted all this data, the data's based on all this empirical evidence, we have all of these specialists doing it, and then, oops, we had a chance to correct it when we should have corrected it, but we didn't and then we corrected.
I think Carol addressed that by saying that mistakes were made and she asked the team of consultants and professionals to better coordinate. And the result of that better coordination in response to the questions that came up to the hearing was better coordination. And it resulted in an $800,000 increase in construction cost. It resulted in ultimately a $4 million reduction in what we estimated is the acquisition costs. And I think that those are the two areas that were most affected and incorrect in the first submission to the board. So I think Carol's response, I just rely on it, which is that on the basis of the questions that came up, she asked the consultants to coordinate better. And it's, you're aware that the cost estimator isn't the engineer on the project.
Yes, I'm very aware.
And subsequent to the work that he did that resulted in the cost in March, yes, in the summer, they did do some additional test pits and they discovered additional information. It was communicated to the cost estimator so that he could write a letter on September 24th.
That ironically came after the major.
First hearing.
Mistake was uncovered about the site.
No one's standing there and saying mistakes were made.
No, I understand, but you can understand why the board has got a big question mark as to the accuracy of these figures because of the timing, the timing of the error and the timing of the correction and the introduction of additional material makes the board go, hmm, what's really going on here?
And I, I'm very empathetic to that. I can understand exactly why you would have the question. And I think it was because mistakes were made. But, you know, I believe that we, you know, in the process since then, we've tried to restore the credibility and the facts are what are driving this at the moment and they resulted in an $800,000 cost increase of direct cost and a reduction ultimately in the value of acquisition based on review of that of almost.
And an increase in the price of rights, of the development rights, also came at the same time.
Well, I'll speak to that separately.
Right, but let's say for the record, there was a major correction that was needed downward to the site value due to the calculation of the development rights and the max FAR, right?
It was an error that.
That should have corrected downwards.
It was corrected downward and I'll speak to that.
And then it was, right, and then it was offset by the increase in the value of the TDRs.
I'll speak to that separately.
As well, right. No, no, I know, but I just wanted to state the record clearly that it was one massive error and a couple of cleanups in the other direction to offset.
It was an error and a couple of cleanups and the effect of that was the facts were then represented here.
Okay, so we're, just to cut to the chase here, we're still not persuaded by the numbers because you make errors at a time, it's supposed to be a complete application, it's supposed to be clean. I don't really get the idea of submitting an application filled with errors to make your argument and then the board points out your errors and then you correct the errors and it skews everything. And so let's just say, we need to, we need to work on some other things. So I don't want to spend more time.
Yeah, I want to answer each of the questions that came up.
Right, so let's work on like, there's other, there's other mistakes that I see in the analysis that were done, for instance, and I don't know if you want to go through them, but for instance, the lesser variance, two or three, has a difference of 84 square feet on the built residential floor area.
The architect is here to speak to that.
Okay. Well, the architect's gonna talk about 84 square feet? That sounds more like the financials need to be modified for 84 square feet.
We can take them.
Okay.
In order, I'm here to speak about the questions related to the B finding.
B finding.
And the architect is here to speak about questions related to area and design and what's affected. I mean, I can.
I think this is a B finding question. It sounds to me like, right?
No, first of all, it is, it's a B finding question because what he needs to do or what the applicant needs to do is prove that the as-of-right cannot work. And so my pushback was that if I went back to September 30th, which is the revised report with the new numbers, and I used some information I saw in the opposition report and I repriced and plugged in different information, that as-of-right residential 19-story residential and gallery can work. That as of your September 30th report, you have a 5.57% overall return on that. And that's with you renting your parking spaces for a minimal amount of money and it's with about a $2,500 a square foot price for your apartments.
I'd love to speak.
Right, so, but I wanted to clearly state, so my question is, if you rearrange your source of income, you can make a return that is probably an acceptable return by conduing your parking spaces, which I'm sure you're gonna address, and then using condominium sales prices on buildings that are riverfront like yours is because I believe that there's somebody, whether it's your site or the site directly to the south, has some sort of an agreement with the HP building.
Well, we'll speak to that.
Right, because the HP building, you know, if it were to be able to expand in height, I'm sure that 51 West 21st Street would not have gone right up on the lot line with beautiful lot line window apartments.
I think I can address each of those questions, okay? First off, let me start by saying that yes, there was an agreement with the HP building only related to the West 21st Street property, which only gives them a light and area, only allows them to have windows that permit habitable rooms on the other side. They are not considered lot line windows. We or our property does not benefit as the buildings department sees it from the agreement between the West 21st Street property and the HP building. We cannot not have lots.
Right, you cannot have lot line windows, but the windows you do have give you a benefit because it gives you an unobstructed river view.
I believe.
And that's gotta be reflected in your sales price per square foot.
We, I'm gonna stand behind what we provided as comparables.
Right, so then I'm.
And try to present you with the information that supports that.
Right, and I'm saying that a lot of the sites that you used as comparables were east of this site.
We used.
Along the High Line and I would argue.
You used the West 21st Street building.
Right, but I would argue that your riverfront buildings, your tower riverfront buildings, so I'm not talking about the building that is the, is it the Jacques Nouveau or whatever, the building that's two blocks south. I'm talking about your two towers because the towers behave most like your building is gonna behave. And so that would be 211 Avenue as well as 551 plus 21st, who have average sales prices per square foot going up as high as $4,000 a square foot. Your $2,500 a square foot possibly because you're using a lot of sites that are inboard of your site to the east and I don't believe that High Line views are as valuable as river views. So I think that you need to do some adjusting.
Well, we'll take a look at that, but I want to just make the point that the highest priced on the West 21st Street building are incredible penthouse apartments with private swimming pools, with a tremendous amenity package.
Right.
Cannot take.
You have to show us that.
And I'll be glad to do.
You have to go through that opposition's listings and distinguish yourself from them if you're not gonna use those sales prices.
I was just gonna say for now because we, we can't go through.
No, no, in a submission, of course.
But basically, that building has a tremendous amenity package which differentiates, it has 270-degree legal windows looking out on the river. It has parking available onsite. It has a set of building services that cannot be provided, so I will show you how we arrived.
Right, so you have parking onsite, you have 360-degree views.
It has 50 parking spaces, not, you know, not.
It's a much larger building than your, you have 13 floors, one apartment each, basically.
Okay, I will make the adjustments. I do try to address all your questions, so, I mean, that's my job.
And then let's see where the return goes without changing anything else on the cost side. Let's see where the return ends up and then we could talk about whether or not you have a uniqueness finding that results in your building not being able to make a reasonable return.
Well, we think that we do. I mean, it's, there's not a, it's not to my mind, with all due respect, Madam Chair, a sympathy question. We have a $3 million or so cost difference and all the vast pores of variance based on our analysis and we'll take your question, that only eliminates the cost of that variance. In other words, if we did not have that encumbrance that results in $3 million in costs, we would have a feasible project.
But you have to show it to me because what I just laid out in a very coarse way suggests something different.
I will do that, but I wanted to just go over each of the questions that you had. So regarding the value of the transfer, the change in the value there, when we initially did the work in March, we did not have available any actual High Line development rights transfer. So we used the same methodology to value the development rights that we would use on other properties, which is.
I'm accepting your $700 a square foot.
Okay, good, so we can move on.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's how we got there. We had actuals as opposed to estimates. Thank you. I appreciate that. Another question came up on several occasions, why not include grocery store food-related things for our 7,000 square feet of space? We said in part of our response that we have used high-end comps for retail space and we have not presumed it would be gallery. There's nothing that prevents it from being used for any other retail space who wants to pay $130 a foot.
That wasn't my question, so.
This was the chair's question.
Exactly.
Okay, but I mean, I'm going through the list. It does affect the economics. We looked at the Gansford Market. The Gansford Market is not a retail space, okay? It's a food hall. Food halls are run by an operator. The operator organizes it and pays rent to the owner of the property and then runs the food hall. And Gansford Mar, I mean, I, just, so you understand, I just completed a analysis unrelated to the Board of Standards Appeals for a major food hall venue in Hudson Yards. So I'm pretty familiar with how food hall venues work. And basically, there's an operator, he pays rent to the owner, he then runs the place. The tenants who do the little food stands where you buy your ice cream or your pizza or your coffee, they pay on the average somewhere around $7,000 a month to the operator. If we. If we ran the numbers on that for the Gansford Market, the Gansford rent from those tenants is about two hundred ten dollars a foot. However, that doesn't flow to the owner of the property. It goes to the operator of the food hall and he pays the owner whatever rent they negotiate. The Gansford is in the middle of a very high-traffic area and all people who do and develop food hall venues work on the basis of, and the question we get asked on the studies that we do is what's the footfall? What's the foot traffic? The Gansford Market is on the one street that goes from the beginning of the High Line to the Whitney Museum. It's a very high-traffic street. And even with that, we believe that the underlying rent paid to the owner of the Gansford is about the same hundred thirty dollars or less than what we're getting because the little guys who do those spaces are small. They pay a tremendous amount of rent, but it doesn't flow to the owner and the owner of a building can't develop that, it needs an operator.
Okay, but he still gets rent, right?
Well, what we're saying, we have a hundred thirty dollars of rent, foot rent. And we're not restricted in terms of what we can use that for. An operator comes in and says, "I'll pay you a hundred thirty dollars a foot." I don't think the developer is going to turn that away. If a market comes in and says, "A hundred thirty dollars, okay." We're not wed or married to a cow. It's a hundred thirty dollars a foot, which we feel supported by the comps that we did. It's quite high. You look at some of them, and we did it in our response, for example, in the West Fifty's in a comparable location relative, there's a similar-sized space that's going for sixty dollars a foot. And even on an area like Third Avenue, it's only going for two hundred. So, when you look at the comps we did, we think they're fine and we think a hundred thirty dollars a foot is actually a high rent and we're not married to a gallery there. It's whoever wants to pay a hundred thirty dollars for seven thousand square feet of space.
So, what about the comps that were provided, or let's say, the information that was provided about the sale of gallery space?
About the sale? I don't think that it's necessarily, this is a rental space. This is, a rental provides the owner of a property and that's part of the question with parking as well, with long-term revenue that grows over time. The equity that's kept in the project increases as the rents go up at a differential rate to the operating expenses. And that's what rental real estate is about. Not everybody does condominiums. So, the question of a sale of a condominium, I mean, we, sale of the space? I mean, we looked at reasonable comps and we think that the owner of this property would develop it as rental because the rental has, it's a different business model. And to say that he should do it as a condominium, I'm not sure what the benefit would be to him in doing that as opposed to having long-term income at a hundred thirty bucks a foot.
Right, but because we're only looking at the initial years of income stream and we're trying to maximize that to see whether or not you require variance or some waivers, it's why we're asking you to look into conduing the entire building in one way, shape, or form.
But that would be the question you would ask of any rental project. The difficulty, I think, is that when somebody looks at, and you know that, if you're someone who's looking at a project, he's not looking at it as a snapshot the way a performer does. In fact, he would be looking at the increase in income over a period of time weighed against the increases of operating expenses and then what ultimately after a ten or fifteen-year period of time.
Right, before the amount of space that that parking takes up in the building, it's quite a low amount, it seems like it's a low amount of annual income that's been afforded that.
Well, I'm talking about the retail now and I think that using, considering the retail to be rental retail is an appropriate way to look at that. And that's the way we've done it in many projects. I don't think, looking at it as a condominium because the opposition thinks we should look at it as a condominium is necessarily appropriately the way to look at it.
No, it's not that they think we should, they gave us comps on a variety of retail space.
Well, they didn't give you comps, then I'll address the opposition. They gave us a list of retail listings and they did not draw any relationship between our property and that. And then, they're not adjusted and they're not comparables. I mean, it's very, that's, we're going to provide Commissioner Otley Brown with adjustments that look at their list and draw a relationship between our property and the list. But a list is not a comparable and unless it's adjusted, it's not really something that you can
Right, but when you do make your adjustments, please support them with
We'll do it.
Photos, floor plans, and things that are objective to prove your point.
We'll do that. Okay, so, I mean, I think that answered the questions related to retail and we did respond in writing regarding the opposition's presentation. The question was raised, why not have full-floor units on more floors? Why not increase the number of bedrooms? I will provide it as documentation, but basically, the fourth quarter report from Corcoran indicates that people aren't buying three-bedroom apartments. The sales price of, and I'll just quote from their report.
But the super-luxury market.
The super-luxury market has gone down between the third quarter and the fourth quarter, according to Corcoran. And what Corcoran says, studios and three-bedroom residences have increased days on the market. In other words, they're not selling as quickly. In another place in their fourth-quarter report, they note that the, in the luxury market, that the average, the median price, I'm sorry, of luxury apartments has gone down eleven percent between the third and the fourth quarter and six percent in the average price between the third and the fourth quarter. I'm just, this is the Corcoran report. And then, the other thing that they note in their report is a nine percent drop in the median price on three-bedroom apartments will be during the third and the fourth quarter. So, I know that there are several projects that, where larger units were originally established, they're being subdivided. And they're being subdivided because the three-bedroom apartments are just not selling right now. Believe it or not, the market for residential has flattened. In fact, it's going down and developers who have very large apartments that are not selling are subdividing those to make apartments that are more marketable. And these are in really high-end. So, I'll address that further in writing and provide this. But two-bedroom apartments are great. And three-bedroom apartments are not doing as well as they were doing in the last quarter. And I'm just looking at Corcoran because they do an aggregate of the market and I looked at it both in terms of their downtown and in terms of their luxury market. So, markets are volatile.
Please submit that.
I will do that. All right, so that why not increase the number of bedrooms? It's not necessarily the prudent thing to do when the market is flat and goes down and when three-bedroom apartments are not selling. And, you know, Flack Avenue, Park Avenue.
Yes, but one could push back that if you're increasing the number of bedrooms, just like in the as-of-right, you have one apartment per floor. You have one apartment per floor in your lesser variances. If we get to E, I would argue would be a more lucrative venture because you can spread your prime price per square foot across the entire floor instead of splitting it in two.
We heard that comment at the review session and that's what led me to take a look and see what in fact is happening. I'm not sure that the value of one apartment per floor is going to be greater than two apartments per floor in the market. You know, it's not build it and they will come. In a sense, it's what the market is doing.
Seems to be like that on the river. It seems to be build it and they will come all along the river.
There's a lot of that.
Okay, but people who are building in luxury areas, 432 Park Avenue, 4 Sullivan Street, they are now redo, taking their three-bedroom apartments and
That's not the river.
Well, Park Avenue is a good address.
Yes, it's a nice address, but the river is, what's going on on the river? I want to see you pull that together for me to prove your point.
Okay, I'm going to address that, but I felt it was important to note that large apartments are not necessary, you know, you might be right.
I hear your, I hear your point, you've heard mine.
Okay, two-bedroom apartments may sell better on the river than upland, so. Why not move residential units down by eliminating the third-floor parking? I think we already discussed in one of our submissions that the highest values on the upper floors and that moving square footage down to the back on the third floor is not going to in any way be equal to the value of the building and the tower. And whether it has river views or not, it's a big difference.
That doesn't really make sense given that you said on the fourth floor it's an eight thousand dollar income from those apartments versus a six thousand dollar income.
I think in our submission, we showed that moving the floor area from the tower and moving it down below, this was in response to comments, that there was a significant loss in income. It just defies logic to think that you can take a space from high up in the tower building and put it down on the second, third, or fourth floor.
I'm not looking at defying logic, I'm using your numbers. Your numbers are, in the tower, a floor in the tower sells for six million. And the fourth floor, because it's got more floor area on it and it's got lofts and you get bigger units, sells for eight million. So, that's two million more. So, I don't get why you wouldn't want to
I don't know that we said it would sell for eight million. I have to go take a look at it. It might have been for the actual size of the apartment. I don't know, on a dollars-per-square-foot basis, it was the same. I will go revisit that, but it's a very big apartment and on a dollars-per-square-foot basis, it would be
The fourth floor in the lesser variance scenarios, both of them, generated eight point three million in residential sales. Whereas, you got six million in residential sales on a typical higher floor.
But the floor area might be different, Madam Chair. You're selling things on a dollars-per-square-foot basis.
Yeah, so you have more
If I had more square footage at two thousand dollars a foot than I have at twenty-five hundred dollars a foot, I'm still going to wind up with more absolute price.
Yes, but what you're telling me is that there's, basically, your response tells me that the third floor is being filled up with a lot of fluff so as to have the floor area on the top whereas you're, therefore, your waste value, your inefficiency is greater.
I think in our submission, we looked at it on a dollars-per-square-foot basis and we determined that it's, on a dollars-per-square-foot basis, the square footage priced for a second, third, or fourth-floor apartment is not the same as it is in the tower.
But if the size of the tower is only X big, you can only get six million dollars for that X. Whereas, on the third floor, it's X plus a lot, maybe double.
The question yesterday was, if you removed the parking and you added that rear space to an apartment, the value of that, I'll be glad to look at the value of that as compared to what the value of one of the tower apartments are.
It's not a comparison. It's switch out the parking and put in a unit and then you've got eight million dollars of income on the third floor.
I don't know that you have a unit, eight million dollars.
That's what you said about the fourth floor, eight point five million. I'm getting eight point three. I'm getting it from your
We'll, we'll, we'll look at it.
Just one minor point. We can't, the parking is not considered floor area, so we can't, we'd have to move floor area down there.
Understood.
So, you know, moving floor area from one place to another.
Right, but that's a two million dollar
Not, no, it's a loss from what you take from above. Let me do the math.
No, it's two million more from what you take from above.
Let me do the math and see if you're right.
Okay.
Okay, the question was raised by Commissioner Tranda about soft costs. Twenty percent is, we use a line-by-line item basis. If you look at our Schedule B in all of our reports, we identify what the costs are for each item, itemized for soft costs and then we add them up and that's the dollar value. We don't use a percentage. We identify what the assumptions are and in fact, I don't know a condominium, development, luxury condominium that runs at much less than forty percent of soft costs. But twenty percent may be the case in terms of your experience in projects that HPV is doing. We don't use a rule of thumb. We use the line item identification and we identify in light on what the assumptions are and it's the sum of those things that gives us the soft cost. It's not a percentage basis. We talk about what, you can look at what the percentage is, but we're not saying this is the percentage we're using as a percentage of this or that hard cost.
Could we just go back to the fourth floor, third-floor units? These have sixteen and a half foot floor-to-floor heights. That probably wasn't taken into account either on your comps. That's an extremely high ceiling height. So, it seems to me that should have an impact on the sales price.
Are you talking about, is this related to the removal of the parking or?
I'm talking about even on the, you have fourth-floor units which are not being looked at as sixteen and a half foot floor-to-floor heights.
I'll revisit that.
That's some of the highest, you can have mezzanines in there.
I'll revisit that. There were a few minor points that were, tenant-fit-out cost was not in the proposed because the tenant-fit-out costs were applied to the as-of-right because the upper, the upper commercial floors, we assumed would be general commercial use. In general commercial use, the owner pays for the tenant improvements for gallery space, for retail space, the tenant pays for the tenant improvement. So, that's why it did not appear in the proposed. When we remove the upper floors, we also remove the tenant improvement costs. And that's generally, part of the reason we did that is because the floor-to-ceiling heights in the floors above the first floor were not, seemed to be adequate for gallery space and some other commercial use would have to be there. And we assumed it would be general commercial space in which case the owner would pay for the tenant improvements. But that's why it doesn't appear in the post. And I, I mean, I think that's the last point. The parking, we feel is a benefit to the developer in that he has long-term income, that anybody can use the space enhances the value of all the spaces and we'll try to address that a little bit more in writing. I know you're not satisfied with his business model, but there are plenty of parking spaces that are not rented and in fact, in many condominium units, parking is what's negotiated. So, in order to get somebody to buy the six and a half or eight million dollar apartment, the value of half a million dollars or four hundred thousand dollars worth of parking space sometimes just goes out the window because the developer wants to sell the six or eight million dollars and he's willing to make concessions on the parking. So, parking is a negotiable thing.
Right, I think you should price the parking as it's a condo unit.
I know you know.
And keep it separate out of the apartment price so we could be clear about exactly what's being transacted.
Because otherwise, you're not making any case at all for the parking. I mean, it makes ninety thousand dollars a year, that's not income, right?
Well, I think the case that we've made, Madam Chair, is that the parking enhances the marketability and competitiveness of this project against projects that have no parking. And if the parking is available to possibly all of the twenty-five or twenty-eight purchasers, it means that the person across the street who has no parking might not capture one of those. So, there's a competitive advantage to having parking onsite beyond what it would be worth as a condominium. So, there are two separate things. Should it be a condominium, that's a question. Should there be parking is a separate question. We believe that the parking enhances the value of residential units to the developer in a competitive marketplace.
But you're not doing it in any quantifiable way. So, how are we supposed to analyze that, right? So far, it's just a feel, feel-like-it type argument. I don't even believe that your original comps were apartment buildings that provided parking and at least you certainly did.
Some did and some didn't, but we're
Yeah, so it was hard to get at the value that the parking is actually reflecting on the sales price because
We went back and in regards to the question of outdoor space, we broke out what the value of the outdoor space was. There's twenty-five units, there's a small number of parking spaces and we think that having the parking spaces in the building means that this developer has a, can grab a piece of the market against those buildings that might sell an apartment for the same price but have no parking spaces. And that's all we're saying, it's a simple, simple thing. There's a competitive value added that you can't quantify. I can't say it's worth this much for this apartment or this much for that apartment. It's just a question of whether or not the developer can
I really find it hard to believe, though, that a developer would install parking spaces in their building and then say to somebody down the block who doesn't have parking spaces, who's selling their apartment for twenty-five hundred dollars a square foot, that he would say, "I've taken space and I created this space which cost me and I'm going to tell people, 'Come to me for the same twenty-five hundred dollars a square foot because I have parking.'" It's more likely that he'll say, "Come to me for twenty-seven hundred dollars a square foot and I'll make it worth your while because there's parking here and there isn't parking there." But if I'm going to go through the trouble of constructing space for parking, I'm going to want to get some money from that any way I can. I'm not going to say, yeah, but I'm not going to say, "I'm putting parking spaces here and it's not going to do anything for my sales price versus the guy two blocks away."
I would disagree because if I can sell five percent sooner, that's a tremendous, which the board doesn't consider in its analysis, but that the board doesn't consider in its analysis, but that, the carry cost of debt, of being able to sell out a month or two sooner is significantly better than it might be on other apartments.
No, I think you really need to look at your comparables again, and for the comparables that have parking, note that, for the comparables that don't have parking, you need to adjust upwards for this amenity, and then you should condo the parking spaces.
I hear you.
Okay, but even to just go back to the minimum variance subject, and how the burdens, whatever we decide they are, because it's at the moment not clear, it seems to me that the only real burden on the site, in terms of, in terms of the zoning issues that you need waivers for, is this, is this 10-foot split lot condition, and not the parking. The parking isn't a burden on the site, and so if we were simply to waive the 10-foot split lot condition, that, then that would more than compensate for whatever kind of burdens we seem to be able to find here that have to do with premium, which even if we accepted your number of 3 million or something like that of premium, would more than be compensated by allowing 10 feet on X number of floors to be residential. So, the parking doesn't speak to any of that. It's, it's not, for one, you're not able to justify it, and for two, it's not working towards, it's supposed to be direct, there's supposed to be a nexus between the burden caused by the, by the site, and the relief, and the parking doesn't fit there at all.
Again, there's an A, B, I only deal with three of them. The A finding has to be supported by someone else, I try to help out, as you know.
Right, okay. I know, but you only deal with the findings, but I know that you work on, you work on them together, and so, so knowing that the burdens are these very specific things, and that it's really the split lot condition that's causing the problem.
Oh, it's the boulders, and the...
No, it's, but it's the split, it's, the boulders, there's sort of, for one, they're not...
I mean, it's the foundation that are required.
The boulders, we just said, the premium is $3 million or something like that, right? So, the split lot isn't causing a financial, isn't causing a financial difficulty, the split lot is causing a design difficulty, right? It's the boulder is causing the financial difficulty.
Yeah, I'm dealing primarily with the findings, and I think that Commissioner Otley-Brown's question will hopefully be answered to her satisfaction.
No, well, so, but I would like to just have you focus on, if you're able to show that an as-of-right building doesn't work, then it seems to me that the only place that we can get to is that the, that the split lot condition is what's causing your problem, and not the parking, it's not causing any problem.
Well, we haven't said the parking is causing a problem.
Yeah, you are, because you're asking for a parking waiver. It's not, but there's, it's not solving a problem, I don't know what the problem is that it's solving with the parking.
Well, I'd like to take the time to think about what we said, and to get back, and hopefully answer all of the questions, and not debate them.
So, there were more questions, some of which were, showed up in the financials. That's where I got my questions from, the financials, not from the architectural drawings, right?
Okay, well, that was my list from the...
Right, so I just want, so I started to ask this question before. The financials show a lesser variance 2 and a lesser variance 3, but for some unknown reason, there's a very slight difference in the sellable areas between these, between the two. And it's, it's, it makes no sense that there's an 84 square foot difference on one and an 8 square foot difference on the other, and then all the numbers are shifted as a result of that, because you're multiplying 84 times your square footage sellable area, and then you add to its soft costs, and then you add, and you add, and so...
The architect might be able to answer that, I'm like the cost estimator, okay? The architect gives me a table...
Let me just finish my, I know you, that that would be your answer, but the fact is, you're the cost estimator, and you should be looking at what makes sense here, and it doesn't make sense that these two identical projects should have a difference in the, in the floor area. So, it just doesn't make sense. So, you might have made a phone call and said, "Why are these two things different?"
Well, we found things that didn't make sense, that we did call the architect, and, you know, it didn't make sense. But when it comes to what is the square footage that we use, both in terms of, we ask the architect to provide us with a table, we check the table to make sure the math is correct, we don't redo the zoning calculations, we don't redo, we don't do a takeoff on the plans. We ask the architect to provide us with that, and hopefully, the architect can answer your question about why...
Okay, and then the other question is, there was a, in the cost estimate, I know Mr. McFulkin isn't here, what's a doghouse?
Okay, that's an easy question. That's the most, the doghouse is, is the cat on the overrun from the elevator, and it happens to look like a doghouse.
Okay.
All right? That's what a doghouse is.
Thank you. And then the other was, maybe that's an architectural question, but I'm not sure, about the balconies. So, maybe that's an architectural question.
I don't, the question about why...
Why they were eliminated in the version 3, why couldn't they have been located someplace else, because it affects the income.
I think there may have been design decisions made about that, and cost as well, so balconies do cost money to build.
I do have a question, I let the architect answer that question, are there technical or zoning reasons that's causing the balconies to be just facing east and west? Why couldn't, would the value of the property be evaluated differently if the balconies were, if permitted, on the, on the south, yeah, south and north, as opposed to being east and west?
I think there were design decisions made, to answer that question. I just respond to the design that I get, so, but, you know, the balconies have to relate to interior rooms and where they are, I mean, you know...
Well, I think if it's facing, looking at the plan, if it's facing north and south, then it's mostly close to the living room, as opposed to being off the bedroom, I think.
I'll have to ask the architect to answer that, but, you know...
So, I mean, you would still, yeah, you could still have the balcony, here the balconies are off the living room, and you would, one could still have off the living room, so...
It was a design decision that I, I could put on an architect's name, but I don't...
Okay, but with respect to the setback waiver, again, we're getting all of this from the financials, right? That's why we keep asking you the questions. You talk about the loss of having this, not having the setback waiver, that it represents a loss of 1.75 million because the units at the top are more valuable than the units at the bottom, and then you, but I don't understand this, because you're treating it as if this is a unique condition to this site.
Well, I mean, a simple explanation is, you're losing square footage, you're going to lose income because you can't sell square footage that isn't there. The next thing that happens is that the costs don't really change that much for the infrastructure of the building. You have to bring those elevators up, you have to have the cars in the stairways, and they're serving less area, so it becomes structurally and construction-wise inefficient. When you have setbacks, you wind up having to spend more money on waterproofing, on all kinds of stuff, drainage and things like that, where if you have a consistent building going up, you're able to really homogenize the building drainage system, so, I mean, it's bits and pieces that all fit together, but the significant difference is that you're losing square footage that you can't sell, and you're winding up with an inefficient floor plate, and not a significant reduction in the infrastructure cost of the building.
But every single building that has to follow these waivers suffers the same way.
Well, but not everything, when you look at, this building is a, is a mid-block building on a, essentially a small lot, and yes, if I had a bigger site and I had a setback, I could perhaps absorb the setback in the configuration of buildings, because I would have a bigger floor plate as the building went up. This building has a small floor plate, and it's very strapped in terms of what you can do with it. So, yes, on other sites, you might be, we might not be here with setback waivers, but on other projects that I've done and have come before the board, where you have a narrow site, where you have difficulties in fleshing out the building form, a setback has a much greater impact than it does on a bigger site, where you have the ability to design around that setback waiver. Here you have a tower, which is structured by many factors, within the zoning lots that are there, it's not a really big floor plate, and you can't absorb the setback without losing revenue that pays some of the costs. So, I think that's the thinking behind this. And it's not the same as a large footprint or a bigger site, where you can design a setback to work, and you can drop off elevators as they go up, and you can do, because you need to bring the infrastructure up through the building, it's both a design and a structural consideration, and it's much simpler, and you gain more sellable square footage to have a floor plate that's consistent without a setback waiver on a site like this.
But yet, on your highest floor, which is the most revenue enhancing, you have 1,000 square foot open space, which you're not counting and is not selling.
I don't understand.
There's a double height.
There's an open-to-below, double-height space, 1,000 square feet, open-to-below.
When we look at other penthouses, and we look at what you have to do to sell at the high level, a penthouse apartment, it has to have some of those kinds of features.
Well, I think having the windows, and having...
Having balconies, spaces.
At this luxury level, okay, it's really, what is your competition order? What is a penthouse at this luxury level?
I believe it defeats your tower argument, because right there, that's $2 million.
It makes the penthouse, and we'll look at the, I mean, you know, the West 21st Street building, the penthouses are multiple stories, they have private swimming pools, you know, there are features that you have to include in the design of a building to capture the luxury market. So, I don't have a problem with what the architect has designed here, Commissioner Montez, it's not the same as a penthouse in a building that would be for a different class of purchaser. At this level, you're competing with people who are providing spectacular penthouses, and you have to provide a spectacular penthouse to sell it. I could...
But we're looking at costs and waivers, and something a bit different from making a spectacular penthouse.
If I reduce that, if I got rid of that double height, I'd have to reduce the value of the penthouse unit, I couldn't sell it for the same price.
Sorry, but that, where are you putting the swimming pool if you don't have any setbacks?
We're not putting in a swimming pool.
No, but I mean, if you wanted to put in a swimming pool, where do you put in your views of the river with sweeping terraces and all that, if you don't have...
We can't put in a swimming pool, we have, we can put in a double-height space.
You're focusing on a swimming pool, but I'm saying, where are you putting the amazing penthouse terrace if you don't have any setbacks?
We're creating a double-height space, if I didn't have the double-height space in response to...
The terraces, that's what makes a penthouse, right? That's a definite, right?
No, not necessarily. It's the aggregate of the features in the design of the penthouse, and that's what's being sold here.
That's why one penthouses had terraces.
It's too small for a swimming pool, but it's big enough for a double-height space, and if I didn't have the double-height space, there is a roof terrace on this.
There's a roof terrace, but there is, there aren't balconies, I mean, in a fabulous penthouse...
I think this is a pretty good...
You have a triplex that's fabulous, that has balconies on every level, that has all kinds of...
I think this is a pretty good penthouse, and a double-height space is part of what makes it a pretty good...
Right, but you can get, but you can get a pretty great penthouse where you've got setbacks. That's a fabulous penthouse where you've got setbacks.
But we have some costs involved, I mean, I think we can, let us address in writing the question of the setbacks a little bit better, okay?
Mm-hmm, a lot better, because you're not convincing us. Okay. All right, maybe we should hear from the architect, because we have some questions.
Yeah, I'm sorry to say, our architect was here at 11:30 and told us she had a 5 o'clock meeting, we just didn't imagine, and she couldn't be here after 5:00. So, I can answer a couple of questions, but I can't answer all of the architect questions, and we'll have to, we'll have to get her back. The one, the one question that we had all talked about, and I wanted to address, is about the balconies in connection with the current LD3 proposal. Obviously, we had to take the balconies off the west side because we're pushing the building over. On the east side, the, when we looked at the value of those balconies, there's no river views over there, so they don't have the same value as the ones on the other side, and compared that to the costs, because there were the costs of including the balconies and whatever structural issues they were, it just didn't make it warrant to have them on that side.
On which side of this?
On the eastern side. If you, if you have them on the western side, you have the views, and so, the cost benefit works out, but not so much...
But the original proposal had them on the east?
They had them on both, right, and it was, it was that plus a, in that, there was a third factor involved, which was a design factor for having a balance to the building. So, they did include them, but at the end of the day, when they looked, it just didn't, it didn't pencil out.
Is there a reason why you're not allowed to have them on the north and south side?
The south side is, I don't, I don't know that there's a reason, I don't know, I was going to, whether you can have those kind of permitted obstructions and those setbacks, I don't know the answer to that, we can look at that. I can say for the south side that there's nothing really, there's no views. Also, there's, the core is in the south, so that you would, you would, in the middle part, there wouldn't be any place to put the balconies, on the end where you have units, maybe you could, but you don't have, you'd be looking right into the adjacent tower. So, I'm not sure it would, I'm not sure there'd be any excitement about anyone doing, having those. The north, I don't know about the permitted obstruction issue.
So, they line up, you wouldn't be able to see the World Trade Center, I mean, one World Trade?
We have, if we have, do we have, there's a board that we had, remember with the site plan? I think we have, that shows the relationship. So, this is, this is our building, and this is the building behind.
Mm-hmm.
So...
You wouldn't want to put it on the south.
You would not put it on the south.
Well, you'd still have views towards the west, over the river from your balconies. But, that's not so shabby.
Then the people here have posed in that.
Okay, so then, you have other answers to the questions?
Well, I have, we talked about the idea of the setback and why, you know, why at the upper floors, and it's really a combination of the, as Jack said, the additional income from having it those floors versus the lower floors to make up the premium costs. It's also the efficiency factor, we have right now, I think, 80% efficiency on many of those floors, we could go down to something like 76% efficiency if we started to have, where we start to have the setbacks, and the units don't lay out nearly as well. You also, the setback, we had, and this is where the architect really is important, we had put the setback in the southeast corner, because you're required to have 85% of the floor below, there's nothing about where that 85% needs to be, which is a little odd if you think about it, because if you had the 85% in the back, there's no urban, there's no planning or architectural advantage to doing that from an urbanistic perspective, but it doesn't say where it has to be. So, in putting it there, we did it because it was, you know, the least valuable area for us, but also because of the way the layouts were worked. The other thing that the architect explained to me is about where the columns of the buildings are located on the perimeter, and so when you start to setback, you have to have transfers and additional costs and expenses for doing that. So, a combination of the income from it, the efficiencies of the space, the additional costs involved, it just was a very, it didn't make our, it didn't work for us in that perspective. And the, I also want to point out that the site in the C District is limited, so that, and you have to have a 15-foot setback and a 30-foot yard, so after we do all that, our floor plate is 50 by 54, which is very small, and so then if we have to setback further, then that's where all these issues come in with the efficiencies and the, and the costs.
At what height does the setback, is the setback required?
About 40 feet.
Is it 15 or 16, does anyone on the team remember, something, it was, so it's 40 feet, so it was four floors, 20, I think it's the 15th or 16th floor.
It actually could only impact, depending upon how you arrange your floor-to-floor heights, it could impact only three.
Mm-hmm. Right, but then we, wouldn't we have a less, we would have one less floor, right? If we did that way?
No, you would have, you would just have maybe higher floor-to-floor heights at the top. So it would only, the upper 40, that 40 feet would only.
But then the floors below would have to be what, nine or 10? I don't know what the numbers are. The floor-to-ceiling heights for the floors below, because you're squishing it down, right?
Well, I think they're pretty liberal already, aren't they?
I don't, I don't know. Remember.
I mean, that goes to, again, if you were to fill up the third floor, I'm sorry the architect's not here because there's a lot of, I hope that she listens to. If you were to fill up the third floor with more apartments, then you're removing some of the floor area from the tower, then you could have higher floor-to-floor heights, then you could maybe avoid some of the crenellation issues on the tower. And so the hardship that you're complaining of might be avoided by, by your design. So, and not necessarily reducing the value of the sales, because you're having much more desirable units with much higher floor-to-floor heights.
On the top floors, but not the floors below.
However, all of the floor to floor heights are minimum of 12 feet.
I think right now, 12 feet is what's being indicated in the drawing.
So that would go in, again, you'd have to look at, you'd have to, everything is related. So you'd have to look at that in connection with what was assumed in the comps with other apartments and their floor-to-ceiling heights and the like.
Right.
So I don't think we can pull out one, one thing in isolation and say yes or no.
Right, but, but we know that the comps didn't look at 12-foot floor-to-floor heights. They didn't mention them, right? So if that, that makes them not comps.
I'm not following, and maybe this is, I'm not following how we get the same number of floors but have, but the 40 feet only reflects three floors. I see what you're saying, but, yeah, I don't know if that would work or not.
Yeah, so anyway, so that's, I think, sort of to, to cut to the first chase, you need to prove that the as-of-right doesn't work, right? Because otherwise, we're nowhere. Just cut to the second, and prior to that, you have to make us comfortable, much more comfortable with the, with the A finding and really establish that you've got uniqueness on this site, not just a lot of burdens that add together to make it unique, right? Because it's, there's got to be something physically unique about the site, right? Because, I mean, I think that you could look at any site as being burdened by lots of annoying things.
Right, I mean, there is, there is case law that talks about the aggregate, you know, being, being what's unique. And further that if you have two or three, even in some cases, four other sites that are similar to yours, you can still be unique.
Understood. But at the moment, you have in, we have a map that shows lots and lots of sites in a similar situation. So the engineer needs to, needs to get us closer to there being very few sites that are in this situation, so that you can say you're, maybe you're not the only one, but you're one of very few and we, we still don't have that. So that's part, go ahead.
If I may, so there's, there were two issues, right? There's the, the Douglasian, right? That a site may not be individual. It can be, you know, one of few, not, not alone in the universe. The other issue I think that the board is struggling with is the, the aggregate hardship concept. So perhaps just a letter submission sort of with some case law and maybe combing through some board precedent to show where similarly burdened sites have. The board has found an A finding with a similar aggregation of sites, right? Of problems, rather, that the split lot and the subsurface conditions and try and find some instances where the board has said these do constitute.
Where the subsurface, for instance, isn't unique, because often the subsurface is incredibly unique. All by itself, standing alone, doesn't need to be aggregated, right?
Well, I think with the best share of the app, isn't it?
Can I just add? When, when the board has seen cases with an aggregation of uniqueness, there's often been a soft site study that has literally looked at a whole bunch of other sites and said, you know, this site could be discounted because it only has three of these problems. This site is discounted because it's larger. This site is discounted. And you get, you are slowly working your way down to the point where you are only one or one of two, which is burdened by the same, the same of issues that have the same deleterious effect on your site. So that, that's what you need to do.
Soft site, okay.
And that's trickier, because you wouldn't have looked at this necessarily as a soft site with a, a building that's not being demolished, right?
Although it is, I forget what the percentage is, 50 or 60. It's, it's fairly low percentage of the fully built-out area of the site. It is, it is a.
Considered a soft site.
Yeah, it is considered a soft site, yeah.
We can discuss that apply as well.
Okay.
Okay. And then, then sort of the general take is, we're having a lot of trouble with this, with the numbers and the shifting amount of, the shifting amounts. So because of the history of this application, so, so you shouldn't assume that we're accepting the numbers as they keep going up, right?
I think I got that. I think I got that today.
Okay, you got that. So then, understanding that the premium costs are not that high, then the scope of the waiver also is more limited. And it seems, from my perspective, and I don't know if the other commissioners agree, let's just say for argument's sake, you were able to prove the as-of-right didn't work. And I, I don't know if you can. From my perspective, the only burden there is on this site is the split lot. I mean, the only burden imposed by zoning, in other words, is the split lot condition and not the parking and not the crenellation at the top. And those are, those are one of halves, but those are not things that have been proven in any way make this go to the minimum variance and making the project, sort of make or break the project. They don't. So you should really look at this minimum variance as the minimum variance. Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Yes. With that said, and we're going to go back, and among the things we'll do is we'll look hard at the, I think you said hard at the premium costs, because that's, that's where the pickup happens. Looking at the other properties and the split lot condition, soft site, and then there's a whole bunch of other things, I don't think I, this is, so I go over them. Should we do a date now or?
Well, we need to hear from speakers.
I think you have your, your other speakers, right?
Yeah. And did I leave out anything that you wanted to express? No? Okay. All right, speakers, please.
Douglas Woodward, I'm representing 551 West 21st and 532 West 22nd, I'm in opposition. And I think I'll reserve most of my comments, because we've heard a lot today, there's been a lot to absorb, and I can respond in more detail, I think, since the, you know, the hearing's going to be obviously kept open. But I do want to say that we will provide you with details on the excavation, the demolition, you know, the leaning and building conditions adjacent for 551 West 21st Street to help inform the decisions here. So if there's anything else you need. And, and we would like, since the applicant is relying on the, the three other sites in the area that Mr. Kek referred to, those should, should we think be part of the record. So we, we would actually like to see those and be able to review those as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other speakers?
Robin. Hot, it's late. Good evening, almost. Robin Kramer from New Valen Stakenfeld, on behalf of West Chelsea Partners LLC, which is the owner of the property that you refer to as the HP property. They're the tenant, the, not the owner. Originally, we had, I had come in at the, originally at the September hearing, I had come in and said we weren't opposed and we were very concerned about the, the location of the building. We wanted it to be set away from our building. After further consideration, my clients have determined that they are actually opposed to the variance. What they're primarily opposed to is they do not believe that the use, that there is a use issue here. The finding requires that the building, the site cannot be developed on an as-of-right basis for a use that complies with the zoning resolution. And there was a lot of discussion about the split lot condition, with the assumption that on the C6 portion, you had to have residential use, and in the M portion, leaving aside the fact that we know it's not manufacturing anymore, with the M portion, you had to have something else and they analyzed a few uses. But what they didn't do is analyze any one of the uses and use groups, five through 12, the vast majority of uses and use groups, five through 12 are permitted in both the C6 and the M15 district. And therefore, you could have an as-of-right building that was all office, that was, had a lot of office, that had larger galleries. In the neighborhood, we've got the HP building next door, which is an office building in the C6 district. On this same block, my clients are developing an office building in the M1 portion, but they're doing a high-end office building. Other non-residential developments in West Chelsea include 530 West 27, and I found these by Googling, truthfully, containing an exhibition hall and eating and drinking space, 540 West 26th Street, which is a new proposed development that will have 29,000 square feet of gallery space and 99,000 square feet of office space. The Chelsea Arts Building and the Chelsea Arts Tower are both gallery buildings, all of which would be permitted as-of-right uses, could be developed on both the C6 and M15 portions. So we, that is my client's view that the use is not, there's no variance needed for the use. I do have one other comment, which is that if the board determines that the variance is appropriate, I note that our building has a fragile foundation system with poor soil conditions and a shallow water table, and therefore, we are concerned about where the footings of this new enlargement would go. And we, on the last, the lesser variance three, has the footings, I hope, eight feet away from our building, and that would be the one that would be the least disruptive to our building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers?
I just have a couple of responses to the last person, which is just like the, getting a list of, the listings, as Jack has said, versus the comps are very different. Listing buildings and uses and not knowing anything about those sites is a very different situation. So I don't know. The only site I do know a little bit about is the HP building and, but they have an office, but they also supplemented what they do by selling their air rights for, to the next-door neighbor, to the Resnick site, to the site to the south. So I don't think those are comparable or helpful in analyzing this particular building. With the footing, of course, we've been saying all along that we want to keep our footing away from, footings away from them and that we're very concerned about the destabilization, and we will continue to, for that to be the case. So now if we can talk about the schedule.
So you're, you tell me, we have a lot of work to do.
Okay. So what I, what I have of the dates, but I don't know the submission, is for February 23rd continuation, what would be the?
Ah, okay, so then you would have to submit by February 4th.
Okay, that's what we would request.
Okay, you could submit that soon? Oh, actually, no, we have, we have opposition counsel who, who asked for two weeks, which is normal, which we normally give, and then you can have time to reply, which is normally a week.
So does that push us to the eighth, March 8th?
Yeah, so if we were to do it like that, eight, let's see, you would get a week, you would get.
Is there a hearing before that? Is there one March 1st?
No.
No.
No. So if, if the next hearing were the eighth, then let's work backwards. You get a week, you get two. That doesn't work. That only gives you till January 27th to submit. So if we have, unless you don't want a, a week to reply.
Okay.
You don't want a week to reply or you want?
I think we don't want the week to reply.
Okay. So March 8th and going backwards. And your submission, February 3rd. And opposition submission, February 17th, for a hearing on March 8th. Okay?
No replies?
No reply.
Fine, okay. Good. This concludes the public hearing for January 12th, 2016. I told you. Did you do the second?